Call the county council order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. First, I pretend as an optional prayer by Mrs. Fatika.
Tonight, we ask for the guidance in a prayer of St. Francis of Assisi. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Fatika. Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Chairman Faust?
Here. Mrs. Law is severely under the weather, but is a trooper and calling in tonight, so if we don't fully understand her, it's not her fault tonight. So, hang in there, Carol.
Speaking in tongues.
Next is hearing of the public. Nobody had called in ahead of time, so anybody who wishes to speak tonight will have three minutes on the topic of their choosing. All of you will have a chance to speak, so you don't have to worry about getting in line. I'll give you time if you still want, if you haven't spoken and we're still at that point of the meeting. So, if you could step up to the microphone at the time that you would wish to do so, just give us your name and your municipality and we'll give you three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you Chairman Dr. Faust and thank you Administration and County Council. And Carol, get better, get well. Sending my prayers and thoughts. First and foremost, I'd like to hand this out to the County Council.
Raise the mic.
On this, let me try to make this short and speak because I only got three minutes, basically. It says gay conversion therapy statistics, pension petitions and links. If we do not ban gay conversion therapy, the LGTU in Erie County are eight more times to have likely have committed attempted suicide. Six times it's likely to report high levels of depression. Three times as likely to use illegal drugs. Three times as likely to be at high risk for HIV and STD. I've been giving you the HRC information, the Human Rights Campaign's information with the first link and the Trevor Project. The Trevor Project has been a facet across the nation and I really am an advocate for everyone to please look at that website and please look at that very thoroughly. And the last one, I was the former regional co-director of Marriage Equality for Pennsylvania. We were a 501(c)(3) that dealt with marriage equality, nondiscrimination laws, gay conversion therapy and everything that we're trying to fight for the LGBT community. And the one thing is, is that I've provided you the link. We've gathered 8,110 signatures in supporting a ban on gay conversion therapy. So what I'd like to do is, I went to the Erie County Human Rights Commission meeting the past couple of months. I've gotten their blessing to work with them, to draw up an ordinance to finally ban gay conversion therapy in Erie County. I would like to do the proper protocol and proper procedures with the City of Erie, Erie County, Erie County HRC, so we can do this together. We can bring the LGBT community in on the conversation and we can make sure that we are all on the same page and that we are doing this not just for the LGBT youth right now, but we have to think about the future. In the last link, there are six municipalities in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that are banned it. Allentown, Redding, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Doylestown and State College, Pennsylvania. So that's why I'd like to begin the conversation. I'd like to begin the conversation to ban gay conversion therapy because I think it's high time that we stand up, not just for the youth, not just for the LGBT community, but for our future leaders in Erie County. And the last thing I'd like to say-
Jason, thank you. Your time has expired.
Okay. I wish I had those two minutes.
That's all right. Welcome.
My name is Hugh McCartney. I'm from Northeast Township. And I'm here to address the inadequacies of your electronic voting system. I have been concerned about this since 2004 or '05. You don't have a paper trail for each vote. You can't do a recount. You need to fix this. Now, I know that by now, your machines have gotten older, I've gotten older, we've all gotten older, and they're at the end of their useful life or coming to it. I also know that it's going to cost, in the neighborhood, $25 million to $30 million to replace those and maybe more now that the governor has mandated that you have a paper trail. That's what inspired me to come tonight. So, what are we going to do? What are we going to do about the machines? You need to keep this in the public eye because if the public knew that you couldn't do a recount, that the auditors would approve, don't you think there would be an uprising, some outrage? Maybe not. It hasn't happened yet. So, what are we going to do? I have two options. The only two options I see is you pony up those millions of dollars or you go back to paper ballots and keep the money in Erie. If you buy those machines, you're going to send that money to Wichita, Kansas, Holland. And then you're going to pay for upgrades periodically in Wichita, Kansas. If you go back to a paper trail, or paper ballots, you're going to pay people here to count, you're going to pay people to administer that and you're going to keep that $23 million in Erie County, not somewhere else. So, oh, and by the way, let me see if I can get this right. The National Association of, no, I forget. The, one of the governor's people, I can't remember who it was, was sent to an association. They studied this problem. They said, "If you can't trust the system, go back to paper." Canada does their federal elections on paper. Holland just returned to paper because they can't trust, I'm not even talking about the Russian issue. We have a bigger issue right here. When we buy an election, like electronic machines that we can't see under the hood, it's like you buy a Corvette and as you're going out the door, they go, "Well, but you can't look under the hood. You can't see the source code. You can't see the engine that drives this." That's exactly the position you guys are in.
Thank you. Your time has expired tonight.
Dang it.
My name is Patrick Deck, Fairview. I'm here tonight, basically Chairman Faust, Dr. Faust and esteemed Council. I'm here to give you a little bit of an update on an investment that County Council made of $100,000 in 2014. And that was for the emergency vehicle preemption system for Erie County. What did that $100,000 get Erie County and their residents and their emergency responders and their fire departments and their, you know? It got, the initial go-around was 57 intersections were updated throughout the county in Summit, Millcrick, Fairview, Harbor Creek, Lawrence Park. And it was, more importantly, it was the impetus that got Pendot to commit to putting the emergency vehicle preemption and every one of their upgrades since that time. And that has included East 38th Street project. That's included around the interchange by the Millcrick Mall. In the city, they've done the interchange at 79 conclusion onto 12th Street. They did Green Garden. They did Lincoln. So, that $100,000 has grown into, and the vision that you guys had had at that point of putting up that $100,000 so the municipalities could also match it with another $100,000. Millcrick Community, Lee Com Health Systems put up another $30,000. Has grown into today, 110 intersections have been upgraded throughout Erie County. And now, Pendot's remained committed to it now that there's a new administration in the city. I have to sadly report, not that many went into the city, but the cities, the tide has changed and the wind direction has changed and the city is now open to adding emergency vehicle preemption and the updated equipment that, by the way, I didn't mention, that original equipment was installed in the '60s, making it over 60 years old. And the credit goes to you guys. You guys were the base. You guys were the foundation. You guys were the people that put up the $100,000 and let that $100,000 grow into, right now, there's in addition, $500 million that has actually been invested in emergency vehicle preemption, or 500,000, I'm sorry. But again, I just wanted to thank, thank you guys for your leadership, for your vision and for your help in a very, very important life-saving public safety project. Emergency vehicle preemption saves 25% improved response times. Now with the, all the emergency, and by the way, I'm with the Fairview Fire Department and I will tell you that not so much out where we are, but I know that Perry Highway, Millcrick, Millcrick Paramedic Service, Emergent Care-
Pat, thank you. Your time has expired. I'm sorry. We try to be very stringent with it, so everybody has a fair shot.
But again, wrapping up is that everybody's been to bed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Cindy Purvis, 101 West 34th Street in Erie. I'm here today to talk about the voting machines to back up what Mr. McCartney had said. Our governor is so concerned, as you are all aware, he has mandated that all new voting machines purchased have a paper trail. We hear about this almost every day on the news and people are concerned about our voting machines. There are several counties in this Commonwealth that do have paper trails. And I am here to encourage you to please find a way to get paper trails on those machines before the November election. It's that important. And perhaps some gaming revenue would be available for that. If that's not possible to do this year, I think you seriously should consider just a plain old ordinary paper ballot, just like the one I receive in the mail for my absentee ballot, to have that at each polling station for each person and don't even bring those machines out in that case. Because the people, whether they're hacked or not hacked, it's the people need to feel and they need to be able to depend on their vote. So we can't have people not showing up to vote because they feel that their vote won't be counted. So, I know that all of you, in all of the work you do, really are, make, are stand for democracy in our government and I thank you for that and I encourage you to take up this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Elizabeth Kaylee, City of Erie. So I came to talk to you guys tonight about the proposed changes to the LERTA ordinance in the city. The mayor wants to make it citywide and I've come on behalf of the Erie Community Benefits Agreements Coalition to ask you to consider the changes that we sent to Mr. Smith and I hope that you all got those changes to include things like fair hiring practices, jobs that will be created, not just being minimum wage jobs, et cetera, et cetera. So more like an emergency jobs act. So basically, we're asking from you that you do not approve the citywide LERTA unless it absolutely does include these changes that the Coalition has brought to your attention. So, Mr. Smith, were you able to send out the changes to the LERTA ordinance that I sent to you? So you all seen it? Have you all had a chance to look at the changes yet? Yes? Okay. Well, I brought paper copies for you guys too, just in case. This might be slightly different than what I emailed Mr. Smith, but it lays out all the things that we want included in a citywide LERTA. And once again, we ask that you approve these enhancements if you are going to approve of the citywide LERTA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sister Michelle. I'm with the House of Mercy in Erie, Pennsylvania. Sister Michelle Shrek. And I just would like to commend you all on taking leadership with the land bank and sharing resources with the City of Erie. I think that really shows leadership and I hope you'll continue that leadership as well with the LERTA agreements that provide living wage jobs. That's all.
Thank you.
You get the prize tonight, Sister, for being short and direct. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak tonight? Nobody? Go ahead.
I just want to reiterate what they said. I mean, it's obvious how polarized our society is right now. We spend billions of dollars in defense of our country and I don't have any objection to that. But if you don't secure our polling places, they're in a sense, a Trojan horse. And whoever loses an election, they're going to have an excuse to say it was fixed, whether you're a Democrat and a Republican. So I urge you to take this seriously because a lot of Americans are taking it very seriously and we're polarized enough and none of us need that, especially you guys. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Christine Park, 514 Shenley Drive. And this is the first meeting I've actually been to, but I came because of the voting machines and I wanted to say something about them. I don't have any faith in voting anymore and I've lost that entirely. And I just want to echo what has been said about paper ballots. I think that we should switch to them or find some way that they are definitely secure. And we can't go on like this, worrying about whether our votes count. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Wachuku, City of Erie. I wanted to speak in support of the enhancement to the LERTA proposal. Of course, we should encourage developers to come here, but making sure that we're attaching opportunities for local Erieites to have employment. So allowing people to have those tax breaks, but also making sure that we're using this opportunity to help people in the City of Erie. So I just want to speak in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak tonight? Don't be shy. Okay. Seeing no one else coming forward, we will move on. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 23rd meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any comments or changes to those minutes? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the minutes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Carol.
That's close enough, Carol. All right.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Reports of county officials, county executive and/or her designee? Thank you. Mr. Sparver, Finance Committee. Mrs. Law, do you want somebody else to give a report, Carol?
Yeah.
Okay. Who was at the meeting that would wish to give it?
I was there by phone, so I can go ahead.
Go ahead.
That's all right. So the Finance Committee met on March 1st and moved forward for new business items A, B, C, and D. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the Finance Committee meeting? And the Personnel Committee, I don't believe, had any business, correct?
Correct.
So, no report? No one asked to have a report tonight? Has anybody changed their mind at this particular point?
Yeah.
Mr. Horton?
I feel led since we passed my eight-minute goal of, good evening, everyone. It's not, not a protocol for us to respond to the comments that you've made tonight, but I feel led to at least speak to the election board stuff since I am the Chair of the Election Board. And it's good to see Mr. McCartney back again. We've had this dialogue over the past year and a half or 18 months. He was invited in, which he accepted and came and spoke and enlightened us to it. We did research and we came back and we shared that with him. And so, we are able, actually able to do a recount. We're not actually able to provide a paper trail. And so, I don't want that to be left out there. And I know this because I'm here because of a recount and as many, some of you already know. And so, the LERTA, the CBA, I'm glad to see that there's a Coalition out here working towards community benefit agreements. The, you know, I came here a couple of weeks ago and I gave a short dissertation on the 24 Wall Street USA Today article. And I put responsibility on myself first and I, you know, I kind of did a roll call and I went, "I'm going to spare you the roll call this evening." But there hasn't been anything, any response that substantially resulted in any action being taken to alleviate that declaration that Erie is the worst place in America for African-Americans to live. In addition to that, weeks later, or just last week or two weeks ago, the 16510 area code was declared to be the worst zip code in the Commonwealth. And that's where, that's right where we're sitting, the common seat, the county seat. It runs the 12th Street corridor down to right about where we're at. It's the epicenter, fringe of the epicenter of the Erie Refocus Plan. LERTA is a citywide thing and they are asking for some adjustments and there should be, I believe, I'm of the mindset that there should be some tangible benefits to the citizens, particularly those who are being gentrified. And so while we undergo this great renaissance in this development that is much needed and much appreciated, we still are leaving people behind. Those that we're leaving behind, we're also pushing out and displacing. And so there has to be a way that the citizens enjoy some of the corporate or some of the tax giveaway besides promises of jobs, oftentimes minimum wage jobs. There has to be a way that if you're going to gentrify or move people out, that, I don't know if it's, we have a hotel tax, I don't know if it's three cent into a fund or we were raising people's vehicle registration for roads, $5, is it a nickel off of that? I don't know. But there, it's, it warms my heart to see that the Coalition is moving in that direction. And some of you may or may not know that I advocated community benefit agreements four years ago and it just makes good public policy to do local hire, if nothing else. It makes good public policy to leave local dollars in local communities to matriculate into local retailers, into local businesses, into local households, into local families. And so I commend you for all coming down. We don't have a paper trail. Mr. McCartney is correct, as I conclude, that it will take 25 to 30 million dollars. The answer that we sought out for you last time hasn't changed and we continue to reach out to the state. Our machines are coming to the end of life. We can't afford, here at Erie County, to do a 25, 30 million dollar thing on machines right now without it being a funded mandate from the state and from the federal government. I don't think you, as a taxpayer, can afford it. And some might say we can't afford not to. But with that said, and finally, I had the opportunity to do, or to witness on a small scale what you suggested in that, say, totally paper count and hand count. I had the opportunity to witness that just in one small micro-segment of Erie County in an election involving a school board member that was left off the ballot that we, was not too long ago, that resulted in us having to count those votes. And I watched our staff and other people and I watched the election board office and I watched Mr. Smith and I watched Ms. Breeder and I watched Lana count those votes for days on days on days for that one section. And so sadly, that's not a practical answer either. I do sympathize with you and I invite you to come down with any solution, further solutions that you might have towards that end. We welcome you to come down and voice your voice at the seat of democracy at any time. We may not always agree with you, but we always welcome you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Anybody else?
Okay, let's move on. We have no, no old business. Do I have a motion-
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
Moved to consider a second reading of ordinance number 21.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Leon to amend tonight's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Any discussion regarding the amending tonight's agenda? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On the motion, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
I think I learned my lesson from last meeting. We'll have a second reading of ordinance number 21, please, in title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 21 of 2018, 11th 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $39,545 for release of restricted register of wills automation fees.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any discussion? Many of you are new, at least I don't recognize your face. If you haven't been here, the screen will tell you with a little bit more detail on what we are voting on. Any discussion regarding this ordinance? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 21, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. And ordinances we vote, we have two readings and we moved it tonight to a second so we could vote on it tonight to take advantage of the action that much quicker. When we do resolutions, those require just one vote, so there's no, there is a distinction.
So with that, possible adoption of resolution number 19 in title only, please, Mr. Smith.
Resolution number 19 of 2018, approving the appointment of deputy tax collector in Springfield Township.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 19, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Possible adoption of resolution number 20, please, in title only.
Resolution number 20, 2018, adoption of the 2018 Erie County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any questions or comments or concern regarding this resolution? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On resolution 20, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
Moved for the possible sale of parcels from the depository on the unsold properties as the index numbers that are- as the index numbers that are listed.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any discussion regarding that possible sale? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the sale of parcel, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Adjourned.
Council stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.